Ladies and gentlemen, this is Sunil Sanghai. I am part of Capital Markets Committee of FICKI. A very warm welcome to this very special session with Dr. Krishna Murthy Subramaniam, Chief Economic Advisor of Government of India. He is not new to us. He has been always obligeing us through his address at the CAPM. He has spoken at the previous CAPMs also. Dr. Subramaniam, a very warm welcome to you.
Thank you very much.
When I was putting down this introductory remark for Dr. Subramaniam, I had three data points. The first, his very excellent, well-written, impressive profile. The second, my personal interactions with him at various committees, etc., which I have worked with him. And the third was a really interesting one. TED Talk which I came across, which Dr. Subramaniam delivered. And I found that absolutely fascinating. So ladies and gentlemen, with his permission, I am going to talk to you about and pick up some of the points from the TED Talk. And I am sure you will find it interesting. Sir, with your humble background, with average academic scores during school, you decided to attempt IIT and IM and PhD from Chicago Booth School. And you succeeded in all of them just because of determination. And therefore, the four points which you laid out in your TED Talk are really very impressive. And I want to read those out to you here. The first and very important one, to have the courage to live your own story, even when adverse circumstances may cry out for you to just follow the herd. It's so true. The second point, resilience is built not by pursuing instant gratification, but by having the stomach to sacrifices and delay gratification. It's absolutely true. We call it as a long-term greedy. And the third point which you make is follow your own story in pursuit of happiness and not in pursuit of power of self. And the final point, do not afraid of failure, even when the best of the metrics and the best of the people tell you that it may be good for you to settle for less. Absolutely brilliant. And because it was fascinating, I thought I would share with everyone. I am sure our economy is in the safe hands with Dr. Subramaniam with this background. At this point, I would like to mention though that as a reader of economic surveys since the last several years, I really thank you for making it more interesting. And now we wait for the economic survey rather than getting scared of its weight. In 2020 Economic Survey, you made a very bold statement on wealth creation. And you laid out your reform agenda in 2020 as well as in 2021 Economic Survey. And now we see that playing out. And that's really hard thing to know, both wealth creation and the reform agenda. We'll see what's happening in the market. In fact, we had a session, Dr. Subramaniam, on this yesterday, which is entrepreneurship through private capital. And that was the point which was made in the Economic Survey. With that, may I now hand over to you for your address, Dr. Subramaniam?
Thank you very much, Sunil. I must say, I am very, very humbled by your introduction and the amount of care that you've taken to try and find out something more than what is there in the public domain usually. So I am really grateful to you for that. Yes, indeed, I am very proud of the background that I come from. It helps me, you know, understand the common person's pain. And maybe it is that background that the one aspect that my father used to always keep saying, you know, when I started learning Sanskrit for the first time in CBSE, you start learning when you are in class six. You know, he gave me the Bhagavad Gita and asked me to read that. I was barely able to read it. But the Bhagavad Gita as a guide has stayed with me because of that, maybe, you know, that gesture of his. And he used to always mention that dharma is what is the most important. And I think as an economic policymaker, it is indeed our dharma to make sure that the taxpayers' money is treated with at least the same respect, you know, ideally even more respect than our own money. And I think that is basically the dharma, all of us here in government. And I must mention that this is, it is always a team effort. You know, I've had the privilege of a lot of support from everyone in being able to bring out the economic surveys. And so, you know, and one can only write things. Eventually, decision-makers have to make those decisions. And so, you know, the fact that some of those thoughts have been actually, you know, have been listened to is credit to the decision-makers themselves. So thank you very much once again for inviting me and providing me this platform to share my thoughts. I'll maybe speak for twenty, twenty-five minutes. And I want to focus on primarily on the economic recovery that is on. And yes, it has been impacted by the momentum of the recovery that we were seeing in the second half of the year has been, you know, impacted or had been impacted by the second wave, you know. So for a couple of months, there was some, you know, some lowering of that momentum, but we are again picking up steam. So one thing I will mention, you know, all through in giving my assessments, you know, not only before the pandemic, but after the pandemic as well, I have relied on evidence. And I will also, you know, in some sense, I've had the privilege of being able to walk what I actually spoke about in the TED Talk, which is, you know, to have the conviction actually. So I, for instance, have not been drawn into a lot of the doomsday predictions that have been made, that had been made about the economy, you know, around last March, April, etc. by many commentators. You know, based on my own conviction, my own understanding of the Indian economy and the data that we track, we track close to sixty high-frequency indicators. I have considered it my duty to actually, you know, give a assessment that I think is right. And even if that may be actually different from the herd. Here, I am reminded of a couple of behavioral biases that, you know, behavioral economics talks about. One is oftentimes during periods of extreme uncertainty, it is human tendency to try and herd with, you know, and, you know, be part of the crowd. And as a result, even balanced assessments oftentimes can appear, you know, more optimistic. So I think that is a bias that, you know, I must mention. And secondly, oftentimes, a lot of assessments suffer from what is called the saliency bias, which is that the latest observation is, you know, taken into account a lot more than the trend that is prevailing. And I will use the example because this is, you know, take for instance, the R assessments and compare it to, for instance, the IMF assessment. You know, at the start of the year, there was twelve point five percent. And then they've brought it down to nine point five percent. If you look at RBI's assessment or our own assessments and, you know, our assessment has been that this impact of the second wave will not be as large. And we had kept it, so we were certainly, we didn't, you know, go as aggressive as to say that the, you know, growth will be twelve point five percent. Nor do we now think that the revision should be as large as they have done, which is, you know, some of the saliency bias that I want to highlight, which as analysts, as commentators, we have to be careful about. With those couple of caveats, let me actually get into some of the details. I think first point that I want to mention is that the economy in the, you know, in the last year indeed had a V-shaped recovery. Now, when you unpack and look across sectors, etc., you know, we can possibly debate about some of the other aspects. But at the macroeconomic level, when you look at GDP growth or several other indicators and those, for those who actually would like to see the evidence, I would suggest take a look at the latest, you know, the Economic Survey and the May edition of the Monthly Economic Report. Every month, the Ministry of Finance brings out this report. So take a look at the very first chart in the Monthly Economic Report. So after the twenty-four point four percent decline in the first quarter, India actually had indeed a V-shaped recovery. And those of you who track my media interactions will recall that after the first quarter results were out, I did mention that by looking at the high-frequency indicators, there is a V-shaped recovery that is on. And we are glad that that indeed transpired. The, you know, seven point five percent for Q2, zero point four percent for Q3, and one point six percent for Q4. And there as well, actually, there is a story within the story which we have to acknowledge. For the third and the fourth quarter, the GVA change is a much better indicator of economic performance because GDP is GVA plus taxes minus subsidies. Because of the high subsidies in the pandemic year and the, you know, the backloading of that in Q3 and Q4, as well as the change in the, you know, accounting, the government of India's accounting, as mentioned in the budget, all of balance sheet items being brought on balance sheet, the GVA change is a much more, much better reflection of the economic performance for the third and fourth quarter. So if you take that and, you know, assess it, actually, you know, third and fourth quarter is one point six percent and three point seven percent. And I must mention that if you actually go and look at the four-quarter numbers, four quarters in the pandemic, India is the only country that has registered two consecutive quarters of growth, only country. And I think that is actually indicative of the, you know, resilience of the Indian economy, which is basically what has led to the V-shaped recovery. So in the fourth quarter as well, you know, the emphasis on capital expenditures, which is one of the key aspects of our policy initiative, because capex-driven growth actually leads to sustained economic growth as we had shown in the 2018-19 survey. So if you look at the Q4 numbers, for instance, you know, the gross fixed capital formation to GDP ratio, which is a measure of the investment rate in the economy, was at a six-and-a-half-year high. At thirty-four point three percent was a six-and-a-half-quarter high. In other words, highest among, you know, among the highest in the last twenty-six quarters. So the result of that was construction activity grew at almost fifteen percent, which is really important from, you know, job creation in the informal sector because, you know, especially the urban poor really, you know, really are involved in the construction activities. And jobs in the informal sector are, you know, created a lot by the construction, you know, construction activity. So it growing at fourteen-and-a-half percent, almost fifteen percent was salient, which led to, you know, consumption itself growing at two point seven percent after three quarters of decline in consumption. And similarly, the contact-sensitive sectors actually, after having registered degrowth in the high double digits in previous three quarters, registered a degrowth of only two point three percent. If you look at the GST numbers as well, starting from September onwards, and GST number is something that we all must track very closely because it's a consumption-based tax. GST is a consumption-based tax. And therefore, it is actually a revealed preference measure. It reveals the actual consumption that is happening in the economy because, you know, there is nothing better than actual money compared to, you know, a survey measures can have biases, but actual money that is paid as consumption tax is, you know, is revealing of consumption. So the fact that, you know, every month, starting from September onwards, GST was, you know, at least one lakh crore and hitting the, you know, record high of one point five lakh, one point four lakh crore for the month, transaction for the month of March. In the month of, you know, the June, the numbers that have come, ninety-two thousand crores, which is for transactions in the month of May. Even that, at ninety-two thousand crore, actually tells you that the, therefore, the impact of the second wave actually is not as pronounced as was the impact of the first wave. Primarily because the second wave was much shorter in duration, about six to eight weeks because the rise was very, you know, very steep. The decline has been as steep as well. As a result, while the first wave extended for six months, the second wave was for six to eight weeks. Second, restrictions were placed at the state level. As a result, they were asynchronous in time and they were also heterogeneous in their intensity as well. And, you know, essentials were not impacted, interstate activity was also not impacted. So the GST numbers are basically reflecting that as well. So now, the first point therefore I want to mention is that there has been a V-shaped recovery in the, you know, last year. Yes, you know, when you start unpacking across some sectors, especially listed firms, large firms have done, you know, really well. They have deleveraged, you know, they're basically, their bottom lines have improved, you know. But some of the smaller firms are impacted more. Similarly, you know, people at the, you know, at the bottom of the pyramid have been impacted more, especially urban areas, urban poor. So, you know, some commentators, you know, will say therefore it's a K-shaped recovery, given that some people, you know, some, you know, but that's more at the sectoral level, you know. At the macro level, clearly, it's, you know, V-shaped, V-shaped recovery. And the government has indeed taken steps to actually address some of those sectors that are particularly impacted. And, you know, we can talk about that if there are some questions specifically relating to that. But I think the major point is that the recovery has been sound. There has been, the momentum of that actually has been, you know, affected. For instance, counterfactually or hypothetically, if the second wave had not happened, the momentum would have continued and actually that may have been. But, you know, the second wave indeed did happen, was devastating from the health perspective. But from the economic perspective, impact has not been as large. And the next point I want to make actually is there is a, you know, there is a talk of third wave. And I think, you know, we all need to continue following all the COVID protocols. But I have two points to make from the perspective of the economy, you know, in the context of a third wave. First, as it has been the case, you know, across the globe, economic prospects are inextricably linked to the pandemic itself. And so, you know, what is the likelihood of a third wave? And how intense will it be? Very important for us to understand before we can actually, you know, anticipate or project on the economic impact. So here, I would like to, you know, and first let me admit that I am not the expert. I'm a consumer of the research on epidemiology, very voracious consumer albeit, but still not the producer of such research unlike in economics. And so, I'm not the expert. Please do follow the directions that come from epidemiologists. But I'm going to give an assessment based on my reading of the data, you know, in this area. So firstly, about, you know, we have vaccinated close to forty-five crore people now, you know, and which is about forty percent of the, you know, of the adult population. That's point number one, one shot. Secondly, the ICMR survey, serological prevalence is about sixty-seven percent across the country and seventy percent in urban areas. Urban areas are important because of, from the economic perspective. Now, Lancet and British Medical Journal, there are articles that have come over the last few months showing that even in the context of the Delta Plus variant, if, let's, if people have been, you know, have antibodies, in other words, they have the, you know, they've been infected and they've gotten one shot, then, you know, that is basically equivalent to, you know, the immunity received from two shots. Also, other research similarly published in these outlets suggests that the, you know, once you get infected, the antibodies stay for about at least six months. Some say, show it's about eight months. So I think when you take all this into account and our target to really, you know, vaccinate the entire adult population by December, you know, by which time, at least till that time, the impact of the antibodies actually from infection must stay. When you put these together, you start seeing that we may be close to herd immunity. This is not to say that we should not follow COVID protocols. I think we should be following, but we should actually, you know, while taking all the necessary care, as they say in risk management, you know, if you have to have return, you have to have, take well-managed, you know, you have to manage your risk well. So, you know, follow all the protocols, but at the same time, do keep in mind that some of these statistics suggest that the intensity of a third wave, if it happens, may not be that large. Here, if you look at UK, for instance, you know, compare the second wave and the third wave, the deaths were proportional to their cases in the second wave. But third wave, if you look at, you know, in actual cases, the first fifty days, the numbers for cases are almost identical for second wave and third wave in the UK. But deaths are much, much smaller, you know, and hospitalizations are also much, much smaller. So I think this is something which you have to keep in mind. So as a result, I, you know, sum and substance of this is that even if there is a third wave, you know, I think these facts suggest that the intensity of that may be lower. That's point number one. Second, as was with the second wave, the economic impact was much smaller because, you know, not only India, but other countries have actually learned how to minimize the economic impact by having restrictions more at the local levels, you know, state levels, etc. So, you know, the learnings from the second wave will be useful even if there is a third wave. So bottom line, even if there is a third wave, the intensity may be lower. But do keep in mind, follow epidemiologist's, you know, guidance, not mine. And second, that the economic impact therefore should be much lower. And we may be very close to herd immunity therefore. So I think contact-sensitive sectors, etc., you know, the demand there can actually start increasing. So that's sort of the, you know, in terms of the pandemic itself. So our assessment is that the growth projections that we have had done for the budget's growth projection of ten-and-a-half percent, we should be in that ballpark, you know. And I'm not saying that we may have exactly that number, but we should be, you know, the growth should be in that ballpark. And so, we should have a high growth rate, you know, for this year. And now, let me just, and this will be the last part of my, you know, my thoughts. And then we can have questions. So in terms of the growth prospects itself, and here, I think the most important thing to take into account when we talk about growth prospects, there are two parts that I want to, you know, focus on. One is the policy itself that we are doing, that we have implemented. That policy itself has two parts to it, which is the capex-driven, you know, growth, which as we know, you know, capital, and as I talked about from the fourth quarter numbers, capex creates demand in the informal sectors. And that is important because informal sector is the one that actually, you know, gets impacted usually, you know, in crisis like this. So capex-driven recovery therefore actually is quite important. That's one part of the policy push. Second part is all the supply side and reforms that, you know, whether it's labor reform, the, you know, enterprise policy focused on the private sector, the, you know, XPLI scheme for exports, the liberalization of, you know, in several sectors, power, for instance, you know, mining, cryptography, you know, defense production. You know, these are all these actually opening up of many of those sectors. When you put all these together, lots of reforms actually, you know. And I will mention on the reforms that a lot of people now romantically look back thirty years, you know, ago. I was a student then actually, because, you know, an engineering student, but because of my interest in economics, used to read, you know, the pink newspapers. And I remember that, you know, while now we can romantically reminisce, at that time when the reforms were being done, there was intense opposition to those reforms, including from the ruling party itself. There was a particular trio of people in the, you know, in the ruling party, very senior people, which whom I don't want to name, but I'm sure, you know, there are enough books that talk about them, who were vehemently opposed to the reforms in the ruling party itself. And, you know, only a few people saw the benefits that actually will come from those reforms. Most people were actually far more, you know, doubtful about the positive impact. And I think there is an important learning there. There are, you know, some people who actually may not be as convinced about the impact of these reforms. But I think, you know, at least when one talks to industry folks and those of us, you know, in the government, we are absolutely convinced that these reforms are as path-breaking as the nineteen ninety-one reforms itself and will indeed have the impact on investment and on productivity itself. So the combination of horizon investment, you know, and productivity, you know, I expect that from, in FY23, we expect growth between six-and-a-half to seven percent and accelerate thereafter to go towards eight percent. And here, you know, I must mention that you will hear about terms like hysterisms, etc., you know, which is oftentimes used to assess advanced economies. And actually, I say this having, you know, followed the research in this very, very carefully. I think it's important to understand the difference between, you know, hysterisms that happens in an advanced economy and that in a country like India, emerging economy, where there's a lot more, you know, the informal sector. Hysterisms happens when you have actually balance sheets that come really under stress. The cost of financial distress manifests, you know, you have basically firms therefore not being able to carry out their operations, that primarily not being able to carry out their operations because of the cost of financial distress. This happens for formal sector firms who have balance sheets actually. Now, the good thing in the Indian context is that the formal sector actually has done, you know, pretty well, you know, through the crisis. And so, this part of hysterisms that is applicable for advanced economies is something that, you know, should be quite low for the, you know, for the Indian economy. As for the informal sector, the informal sector, when you think about production using both labor and capital, you know, it's far more labor-intensive. They use much less capital and far more labor. And as a result, you know, when economic activities come back, they can immediately start, you know, operations and sort of get back to, and oftentimes even lot of informal mechanisms that actually, you know, thereby sort of cushion some of this impact and something that we must keep in mind when we talk about the, you know. And I think that is sort of a very important aspect generally, especially commentators who read, you know, literature from the advanced economies. It is important to read that, but at the same time also extrapolate and take into account the differences, you know. Economic trade-offs and economic phenomena remain the same across countries. But when, you know, institutional features and boundary conditions are different, the impacts may be different, which is something we have to keep in mind. So overall, therefore, you know, I do think that we should be able to actually hit high growth rates, you know, through in higher investment rates and, you know, more productivity from privatization, asset quantization, the, you know, increase in size of firms, exports, etc., going forward. So I do, you know, I'm convinced that this decade will be a decade of, you know, really high growth for India. With those words, let me thank the organizers once again for inviting me. And I'd be happy to take questions.
This was absolutely brilliant, Dr. Subramaniam. I will turn to Mr. Delip Shonoy, Secretary General of FICKI, for his interaction with you. But there are a couple of points which I wanted to make.
Yeah, please, Sangha, you can take the question-answer session. I'll thank him towards the end if you can moderate the question-answer session, right?
Okay, that's brilliant. In the lighter rain, like you, I have been also reading the pink newspaper. But those days, I think if I recall it correctly, the color is to be white.
You've got me there.
So one, one point I saw, I realized I was keeping the time that almost eighty percent of your speech was focused on pandemic. It's so important. It is because it is so important. It's overarching, the entire impact on the economy. And that is precisely the reason we had, we started the day-to-day with a session on vaccination with Dr. Krishna Ella of Bharat Biotech. And he spent an hour with us. And he said the same thing, forty-five crores people have been vaccinated. He also said that, look, if we do not see intense wave three, then by Diwali, we should be okay. He also said that he is in advanced stages of working on two to twelve-years-age bracket, where hopefully that vaccine should come out. So that's progressing well. And once that comes, then we will be able to cover the other part of the population also. So that should give a lot of comfort and therefore to the economy, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Firstly, Sunil, I'm glad that, you know, two independent opinion. I have, you know, not had any interactions with him. So, you know, his assessment and my assessment independently. Of course, he is the expert, you know, in this area. I am, you know, as I said, only a consumer of this research. But I think it's very, it gives a lot of confidence to, you know, to all of us to see that independent assessments are actually similar. I think there is a good likelihood that while maintaining the necessary caution, we can, you know, get back to normal economic activity, you know. And I think it's a matter of just following some of the simple protocols, right? Simple aspects, you know, make sure we actually have the mask and maintain distance. I think, you know, it's, and of course, washing hands, etc. With that, we can resume, you know, normal activity in a lot of aspects. And the third wave actually may therefore And the third wave actually may therefore may not be that intense at all. I think, so that it's very gratifying actually to, to, to hear you summarize what, you know, happened in the first session. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm happy to send his video, but he dealt with a lot of things. He talked about nasal, nasal vaccine, which is progressing very well and is very easy to administer. The transportation, storage, all of that becomes easy in that case. And then he also talked about for children, he talked about the next level and all of that and Delta variant as well. He gave a lot of inputs on the Delta variant. And I think one could derive a lot of comfort and you can definitely put those thinking in your economic policies and all. One question, I'm getting some questions also, ladies and gentlemen. If you have any question, please send it in through the chat box or through one of our colleagues so that we can put it up here. One question which is, which is coming up and I guess this is from media. You touched upon IMF, which has just happened. IMF's view on the, they revised the number downward a bit because of the wave two, as you rightly mentioned. But there is also a chatter review about inflation. Okay, when, I know at some point of time, we might get into the inflationary situation. What's your view around that? Because that may have an implication on overall growth plus also on the capital market.
Yeah, so that's, that's a good question. I'm going to take it in two parts. One on global inflation and second on domestic inflation. I think global inflation, there are, there are multiple factors at play. Of course, you know, because except India, most other countries, you know, their policies have all been demand driven. And, you know, we know from Econ one oh one, when you only increase demand without, without changing supply, then, you know, you, you do face the prospect of a price rise and inflation. And that's where India has been different, that you've actually, you know, focused on supply and on demand and demand in a more, you know, directed manner. So, so, you know, I'll come to that when I talk about domestic inflation. But globally, that's one part. But at the same time, you know, while the United States seem to be, actually seems to be, you know, well positioned for high growth, you know, there, there are some question marks, at least in my mind, with some of the other, you know, adva- advanced economies. So there is some opposing forces there, which we actually, when we look at it in terms of commodity prices and global commodity prices and global inflation itself. But I think, you know, in, on balance, taking into account all these factors, this year global inflation will be higher than what we've, you know, seen for, 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 for a while. That is my, my assessment. As for inflation in India, I think there are a couple of aspects that we must, you know, keep in mind. One, if you go back to the period during the first wave, for nine months, we had inflation that was above six percent. So on average, you know, during that time, it was about between six to six point five, that kind of, you know. So for nine months, it was above six percent. And that was primarily because of the, you know, the, the supply side frictions that, that manifested. For instance, just take a, you know, a very common thing that if you have onions that have to be shipped, let's say from somewhere in Maharashtra to, let's say, you know, to Madhya Pradesh, somewhere, let's say, you know, in Madhya Pradesh, then they have to travel, these trucks have to travel in the night. And when night travel actually does not happen, then there is, there will be wastage, which then basically reduces supply. And, you know, demand being, some of these actually demand does not change that fast. So reduction in supply, demand remaining the same, you actually have, you know, price increases. So that's sort of an illustration of the supply side frictions that, you know, that, that manifest due to some of the necessary steps that had to be taken during the pandemic. The second wave, you know, did have some of those restrictions, but as we discussed earlier, the first, the, the duration of the second wave was lower. And, you know, as we discussed, actually the overall restriction are also lower and the heterogeneous across states. So I do think therefore that the, the May and June prints that have come above six percent, you know, I, I, I anticipate that maybe this month or, you know, next month, I anticipate it should be less than six percent, you know. With, with reasonable probability, I expect this month also the print to come to be less than six percent. When the May print had come, you know, above, had come six point four percent, I had mentioned internally that this should moderate, you know, even, even, even with, in deliberations, you know, with, with regulators as well. And I think, and, and if you saw the sequential momentum did go down, you know, and the core inflation also has actually has decreased. So I think so far, the assessment and what has transpired seems to be actually in sync, which gives me confidence that going forward as well, inflation should be range bound. You know, despite some of the rise in commodity prices, et cetera, I think it should be within the, within the range for domestic inflation. I think may, it's, it's likely to be more between, between five and six percent. But certainly, you know, will be, will be, you know, in, in, in the range of, of, of basically two to six percent.
So within the tolerance limit of RBI, four plus two.
Exactly.
Plus two minus, yeah.
Four plus minus two, four plus minus two.
What I'm trying to do is there are several questions, so I'm just going to put them in the themes and I don't think we have time for more than two. One theme which is related to, I think what they're trying to ask, international partnership, essentially they're asking around China, that all that which is happening with China. And how do you see both investment and trade with China getting impacted in some bit? How do you see that, that having an impact on the economy?
So this is sort of, I'm, I'm, you know, giving an assessment for how the COVID and, you know, related aspects will sort of affect the world order. My sense is that, and if you can see even from some recent, you know, some statements yesterday and today, you can see that there is a cleavage, you know, into two sets of countries. One, those that are transparent democracies that will play by the rule of law. And second, those that are non-democracies, you know, a lot more opaque and possibly not ones that are actually, you know, known for playing by the rule of law, at least international, you know, in international fora. I think, you know, there will be a separation along those lines. And I, if you look at the, you know, the, the initiative on the quad and, you know, some of those aspects. Again, you know, this is also, I will caution that I am not a global policy expert, I'm not a foreign policy expert, but this is based on again, reading of, of, you know, that's the expectation that I have. As a result, I think India will benefit therefore from trading, you know, with, with countries that are far more sympathetic to, you know, to, to, to basically the kind of values that we espouse. And I, I think that is the way I, I, I foresee, you know, this aspect.
As I said, we have just time for one more, so let me just package two, three themes into one. So I guess what they're trying to ask, because we had Secretary Deepam yesterday at the conference and, and he sounded very positive about the disinvestment program, et cetera. In case there is a revenue shortfall and there's a question around BPCL and all of that, if there is a, if there is a shortfall in disinvestment and therefore there would be a shortfall in the revenue, though there is a makeup happening from the GST collection we'll have to see for the next few months. What's the thought? Because in any case deficit is so high, there is very little room really to bridge that gap. Maybe then the expenditure cut, which will then impact the economy negatively. And I'm sure you are thinking about it every day if you want to share. And before I hand over to SG, I would definitely want some peek into the new, the next economic survey because we are always.
So, so your second question, let me, you know, mention it off the, off, immediately, you know, it's too early. So as for the, so let me, let me, you know, mention my overall assessment and I'll give you the reasons for that assessment. I don't, you know, anticipate us breaching that six point eight percent, you know, fiscal deficit target, number one. Number two, Sunil, I would want to correct that, you know, this perception that it is too high, it's not actually. You know, if you look at it from the perspective of, you know, if you take IMF fiscal monitor, for instance, and look at our peers, right, our, you know, if anything, we actually are, are, you know, are, are much more comfortable on that, on that aspect. Because we have been very judicious in the way, you know, we have basically done the fiscal interventions. And as I had mentioned in an art, written in an article in the Times of India as well, we've used a lot more of the, you know, information from the financial sector to really direct the, you know, the, the, the interventions. And, you know, having learned from some of the mistakes that happened after the global financial crisis, where unconditional, you know, revenue expenditure really actually created a triple mammy of very high inflation, you know, runaway inflation, high fiscal deficit, much higher than peer economies and, you know, very high current account deficit, which eventually led to the paper tantrum. So, you know, based on that, actually we have, so, so, you know, we, we've done what we think is absolutely important actually and, and which is, you know, and we've done the needful, in my opinion, on the fiscal side, directed it very carefully. As for possibility of, of cutting expenditure, I will mention that that is also quite unlikely. Because see, there are, you know, one of the key things that actually, you know, and among the budgets that I was part of, this budget, you know, I will say gave me the maximum satisfaction because this is a, this was a budget really of under promising and trying to over deliver. You know, for instance, the one point seven five lakh crore, you know, disinvestment revenue does not include the privatization of the two public sector banks or the insurance company. Similarly, among the non, non-tax receipts, you know, any revenue that is likely to come from asset monetization. And, you know, recently we had some, you know, work on this being done by Niti Ayog as well. And, you know, there is, there is a likelihood of, of some, of, you know, reasonable proceeds from asset monetization as well, which has not been, you know, factored in. So apart from the fact that overall, if you look at the advanced tax payments itself, which look pretty, you know, pretty promising, you know, on the, on the corporate tax side, so direct taxes and indirect taxes, as you mentioned in your question itself, I do anticipate that from the coming, you know, from this month onwards, we should be getting back to one lakh crore plus again. And we, we, I think we should be able to get the average of September to March, September two thousand twenty to March two thousand twenty one, that average we should be able to get. So when you put those together, direct taxes, you know, which actually are looking much better, indirect taxes, your GST, we haven't, you know, factored in the, you know, either the privatization or in the financial sector or any, any proceeds from asset monetization. These are all basically, these will be the icing on the cake, some things that, so there is, you know, there is headroom clearly, you know, in, in this aspect. And, and so I don't anticipate us either have, you know, breaching the fiscal deficit or cutting down on expenditure. If anything, you know, and, and you must have, everybody I'm sure would have tracked the statements by the Honorable Finance Minister that we are looking to front load the capital expenditure, you know, and, and do it as much in, you know, in, in Q two and Q three, rather than wait for Q four. So that some of the big effects that we saw in Q four of last year, which I mentioned, you know, the construction activity, the, you know, consumption, you know, the, the intensive sectors, you know, your contact incentive intensive sectors, et cetera. When you put those together, we, you know, the reason you want to front load the capital expenditures is so that same effects we can have it in Q two and Q three as well. So bottom line, I don't expect us breaching six point eight percent, nor do I expect us to actually, you know, cut down on expenditures, especially on the capital expenditures. You know, some pruning on the revenue expenditures, which was already that had started some bit, you know, only on the wasteful, wasteful spending, but certainly not on, not on CapEx, given the, you know, clear bind and, and the, you know, the conviction in the government that CapEx is incredibly important for sustained recovery.
That's very reassuring.
So thank you, Dr. Subramaniam. I know that you have, you know, have another engagement to go to. And therefore, you know, first of all, you know, I must tell everyone here that the last time we met was physically in the FICKY office and that was just at the start of the second wave. And while he was delivering the Netaji memorial lecture that time, you know, all the calls I was getting was for hospital admissions and hospital beds from various people and became very distracting and, you know, really apologies for that. But nobody knew at that point of time how, you know, sharp and vicious the second wave would be there. But, you know, in your usual very nice style saying that, you know, you know, you're relying on other people's, other people's data, other people's analysis, especially in the healthcare thing. And we are aware of how you pushed the IIT team with Mackenzie to give you some early indicators of, you know, the second wave there. You have very nicely reassured us that second, the third wave, if possible, may not be as intense or as, you know, hard hitting on the health front as well as the economic front for India. There you've actually raised expectations of, you know, six point eight to seven to even eight percent growth, you know, FY twenty three going forward. You said it was early for the economic survey, but I think, you know, from Mr. Sangay's point of view, he would be looking at, you know, do we have the capital, adequate capital infrastructure and capital resources for becoming a five trillion dollar, you know, economy going forward? You have done a lot of work on this and, you know, we have discussed this earlier. But I think, you know, the bottom line is really how do we find out of box solutions for raising capital resources for India's development process going forward? Thank you for your reassuring words on inflation. A lot of industry is, was worried about the inflation, you, you know, you actually have talked about it there. As usual, very simply put, deep messages. And it's always a pleasure listening to you and interacting with you. And you know, you actually in your question answers, you are direct and candid and give us a lot of hope for the future. So thank you, Dr. Keshavadis Subramaniam, for being with us this afternoon. And thank you, Sunil, Sangay, Abha, Chiku and Jyoti for putting this together.
Thank you very much, Dilip. And thanks everyone, stay healthy.
Thank you.